Commission meeting for March 12th will come to order, please.
March 17th.
March the 17th. It is St. Patrick's Day. So happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone sitting out there. And it looks like most everybody has on green except Sandra.
Sandra.
I am dressed for Murray State. Go race hers, they're playing a little bit later tonight.
Here's her green. Hold that. You got green.
So city clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present.
Tonight we have Reverend David R. Abold. He's the Associate Pastor at St. Paul Lutheran Church and a new resident, a fairly new resident of Paducah, Kentucky, his wife and two small children. So welcome, thank you for being here tonight. And then our pledge of allegiance tonight will be Anna Grace McGee. She's a Paducah Tillman High School freshman. So will everyone please stand?
I'd like to read and pray for you Psalm 146 and then we will pray together. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, oh my soul. I will praise the Lord as long as I live. I will sing praises to my God while I have my being. Put not your trust in princes, in a son of man in whom there is no salvation. When his breath departs, he returns to the earth. On that very day, his plans perish. But blessed is he whose help is the God of Jacob, whose hope is in the Lord his God, who made heaven and earth, the sea and all that is in them, who keeps faith forever, who executes justice for the oppressed, who gives food to the hungry. The Lord sets the prisoners free, the Lord opens the eyes of the blind, the Lord lifts up those who are bowed down, the Lord loves the righteous. The Lord watches over the sojourners, he upholds the widow and the fatherless, but the way of the wicked he brings to ruin. The Lord will reign forever, your God, O Zion, to all generations. Praise the Lord. Let us pray. Almighty God, you have given us this good land as our heritage. We ask that you would grant that we remember your generosity and constantly do your will. Bless our land with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Save us from violence, discord, confusion, from pride, arrogance, from all evil. Grant that we who come from many nations with many different languages may become a united people, united in truth and in honesty and goodness. Support us in defending our liberties and give those to whom we have entrusted the authority of government the spirit of wisdom. We ask that you would especially bless those gathered here tonight in their deliberations. Give them guidance and wisdom as they manage our land and our government, that there may be justice and peace in our land. When times are prosperous, may our hearts be thankful, and in troubled times, do not let our trust in you fail. Through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. Let us bless the Lord. Thanks be to God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much for helping tonight. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Okay, we'll go into our ordinances adoption. We've discussed these, so these will move pretty quickly tonight. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing and approving the Historic Downtown New Business Grant Program and authorizing the Director of Planning to administer the program and provide financial assistance to eligible applicants for relocation for businesses to the historic downtown Paducah. This ordinance summarizes follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the City to establish the Historical Downtown New Business Grant Program, which will be utilized to accomplish the goals of the City to promote the inhabitation of vacant unused commercial buildings located within historical downtown by providing funds to eligible applicants for the purpose of relocating commercial businesses into these existing structures located within the historical downtown and authorizing the Director of Planning to administer the new program.
Second. Okay. Everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Department of Transportation for an enhancement grant award for the development of the Greenway Trail Phase Four. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Department of Transportation for 2009 Kentucky Transportation Enhancement Grant Award in the amount of $520,000 for construction of a foot trail of approximately 5,760 feet long, beginning at Campbell Street and ending near Schultz Park between Madison and Monroe Streets. Local funds required to match the grant are in the amount of $130,000 and will be provided through the Boles Estate Trust Fund and a 2014 investment fund transfer.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Central Paving Company for rental of various equipment for the 2015-2016 calendar years and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Central Paving Company for rental of various equipment for the 2015-2016 calendar years at the hourly rates listed below and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract is a one-year renewal option ending December 31st, 2017, upon mutual agreement by the City and Central Paving Company. The hourly rates are as follows. Tractor scraper, $65. Tandem axle dump truck, $58. Tri-axle dump truck, $85. Excavator, $93. Backhoe, $40. Skid loader, $60. Motor grader, $45. Vibrator roller, small, $28. Vibrator roller, large, $40. Dozer, $90. Dozer, large, $95. Small pavement four-person crew, $75. Labor, $45. Landfill disposal per truckload, $1.
Second. He didn't make any mistakes, did he?
I don't think so. I practiced.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, for the City of Paducah's calendar years 2015 and 2016 street resurfacing program and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, for the City of Paducah's calendar years 2015 and 2016 street resurfacing program and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewal option ending December 31st, 2017, upon mutual agreement by the City and Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC. The unit bid prices are as follows. Item number one, about two minutes surface base, $80 per ton. Number two, milling texture, $47.50 per ton. And item number three, shoulder construction, $37 per ton.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company for sale to the City of its requirement of limestone for the 2015-2016 calendar years and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company for sale to the City of its requirement of limestone for the 2015-2016 calendar years and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewable option ending December 31st, 2017, upon mutual agreement by the City and Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company. The unit prices are as follows. Rick, is this, could you come up here for a second? Just want to make sure I'm reading this right. This right here, this, is that eight, is that eight inches, is that eight feet, what? What is that?
Eight inch rip wrap.
Got you. Okay. Description, number 11, delivered bid amount $15, pickup bid amount $13. Number three, delivered bid amount 1425, pickup bid amount 1225. Number 57, delivered amount 1425, pickup amount 1225. Number 68, 1450, delivered pickup, delivered bid amount, pickup bid amount 1250. Number nine M, you can explain this later, okay? $15, $15, that is the bid amount, pickup bid amount $13. DGA, delivered bid amount 1450, pickup bid amount 1125. DJ, DGA dash plug, delivered bid amount 1450, pickup bid amount 1150. 125 rip wrap, delivered amount $17, pickup amount $15. Eight-inch rip wrap, delivered bid amount $17, pickup bid amount $15. Eight-inch minus rip wrap, delivered bid amount $16, pickup bid amount $14. Quarter inch minus bid amount, delivered bid amount 1325, pickup bid amount 1125.
Okay, Mayor Commission, the references of those rocks or that limestone is a gradation. For example, you hear DGA, that stands for dense grade aggregate. It's a mixture of stone that has a rock anywhere from three-quarter inches down to dust. Quarter inch minus, we all walk on it on the trail, on the Greenway Trail that goes out over to County Park Road, that small rock to dust, that's quarter inch minus. All of those are just different sized limestone that we use. 125-pound rip wrap is used for rip wrap, like on, you know, where we have creeks that wash and stuff. So all of those are just different sized limestone gradations that have different purposes in, I guess, the management and operations of our streets and our streams.
Good. Thank you. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
We'll go into our workshop now, and the subject of our workshop tonight is a very important item, and that's our City Hall site selection review. So I'll leave this up to the city manager to...
Thank you, Mayor Kayler. We have Steve Irvin, our planning director, tonight to make a presentation to you regarding site selection and a process that was conducted at the staff level with Steve in the lead to both identify potential site options within the Government Plaza, which as you recall last workshop on this topic, you indicated that you preferred that City Hall remain in the Government Plaza. That created the advantage, I guess, of being able to consider site options within a more constrained area. Perhaps the flip side of that coin is that it was a area that was limited in size, so perhaps there would be fewer of them. And because the options within that area that were able to be identified were relatively close, there probably was not going to be as much variation between them in the factors that we would use to evaluate them. So Steve has drawn upon his experiences in these areas and other resources to both identify potential sites and also the criteria by which they might be rated. So we, at the staff level involving all the department directors, went through a rating process of the various sites, and it was a couple-hour exercise, was pretty involved. It was a consensus-based thing, and Steve wants to talk to you about that tonight and see where you would like to go from here. So take it away, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Thanks for having me to talk about this important matter. As Jeff said, site selection for Paducah City Hall is what we're going to be discussing. Before we do that, for the viewership at home, I thought we'd step back and just look at a little bit of history. City Hall was dedicated on February 28th, 1965. It's slightly over 50 years old. On May 20th of 2014, the Commission heard an estimate of $15 million for structural rehabilitation, interior renovation of the existing City Hall here as it stands. A City Commission Project Values Workshop was held on August 5th, 2014. Customer experience, functional building and workspace, siting impacts, and image sustainability were discussed. Those are the values. Public comments on those values received until September of 2014. At the November 18th, 2014 Commission meeting, the public comments were summarized. At that time, the City Commission decided that a new City Hall should be built within the existing Civic Center Zone. In 2015, January of this year, staff reviewed alternate sites and established site selection criteria, 10 of them, for the new City Hall. In February last month, directors reviewed sites within the A1 Zone, the Civic Center Zone, and scored the sites using the site selection criteria, the 10 criteria. And of course, tonight, the presentation on those site selection criteria and a staff First, I'd like to look at the existing zoning that Jeff was referring to, the Civic Center Zone. That zone is roughly bound by Adams Street to the south, a half-block above Washington Street, and from Third Street out to Eighth Street. It's the blue area that you see in the middle. The purpose of this zone is to strengthen those cultural and governmental services which benefit the entire region, but which only be supported in the Civic Center, provide a separate and compact area for those important uses, give the City more effective visual relationship in and around the downtown area, and provide in the design of the civic buildings and open spaces a physical point of urban aesthetics and civic pride.
Can you take just a minute and explain the derivation of that statement?
Sure.
Where it came from and where it's from?
The Civic Center Zone, this is part of the original urban design of this area, to have a compact area of governmental buildings, and in this case, to have the plaza, Dolomene Plaza, flanked and surrounded by governmental buildings. If a person wanted, whether it's pedestrian or automobile oriented, to come downtown, they could go to a lot of different places at one time within a compact area, all centralized around the Dolomene Plaza. And that takes us right into the next slide, and that gets into the land uses as we sit right now within the Civic Center Zone. And once again, that's the blue line around the outside. You've got the City Hall and Courthouse really flanking the Dolomene Plaza on both sides. You've got the Public Library, parole office, and 911 on the other two sides of the plaza. At the corners, you have Paducah Sun, City Hall Parking. You have Democratic County Jail Courthouse, quasi-governmental agencies, and the Public Library. So primarily, all the dense land uses within the Civic Center Zone right now are governmental or quasi-governmental agencies. Progress in 2015. The Planning Department was asked to review potential sites within the A1 Zone. Five sites were preliminarily selected within the zone. 10 site selection criteria were created to score the five sites. Each site has been scored 1 through 9 using the site selection criteria. A final site selection impact score was given to each of the five sites based on the average of all criterion scores. At the directors' meetings, the directors were asked to discuss each site utilizing the criteria and come to a consensus on an impact score. So that was all of us getting together and coming up with one score on each other's site using the criteria. The Paducah City Hall site selection scoring procedure, right here you see the criterion strength with one being the best score that you can get and nine being the poorest. They're categorized into 1 through 3, 3 through 6, and 7 through 9, with five being average or good. The 10 criteria that I was referring to are zoning, land area, visibility and prominence in the Civic Center Zone, parking availability, pedestrian accessibility, vehicular accessibility, impact on government services, construction cost, obstacles to proceed, and utility relocation. The first criteria was zoning. Is a site properly zoned for a new City Hall? The second is land area. Does the site have adequate space for building and parking? As an example, the existing City Hall location, the post office, Dolomene Plaza, all contain approximately 112,000 square feet. That's one city block. The new building, as drawn preliminarily, contains approximately 112,000 square feet. That's on two stories. Pursuant to the City of Paducah Code of Ordinance, 57 parking spaces would be required for that size of structure. Under visibility and prominence, a very important criteria, does the site maintain massive buildings, massive buildings within the Civic Center Zone? Currently, the Dolomene Plaza serves as a central location around which the government and quasi-governmental buildings, which as I spoke of earlier, City Hall, the courthouse, library, information technology, and 911 face. Number four is parking availability. Does the site have adequate room for parking, and does it maintain off-street parking? Five, pedestrian accessibility. Does this site have good pedestrian accessibility? Under six, the same for vehicular. Does the site have good vehicular accessibility to the site and into parking lots? Number seven, impact on governmental service. What impact on governmental services will be created by the selected site? Under eight, construction cost. What are the final costs associated with relocation to the site? And certainly, we're very preliminary at this point and do not have hard construction costs, so it's very hard at this point to say what that is. Obstacles to proceed. What is the impact of construction obstacles? And finally, under utility relocation, would major utility relocation be required for each of these sites? The five sites that we've looked at preliminarily are, first, the City Hall site, that's where City Hall sits right at this time. The second is the Dolomene Plaza, which is directly across Fifth Street. Third is the City Hall Parking Lot, which is across Washington Street where the existing city employees park at this time. Four is the U.S. Post Office site across Fourth Street. And number five is Fifth Street, directly in front of existing City Hall on Fifth Street, between City Hall and the existing plaza. These are just concepts preliminarily. Please note that you'll see the brown square on all these drawings. It's just to give reference of what a 57,000-square-foot two-story building looks like. Here is City Hall site number one. It's in the existing City Hall site. You'll note that there is parking off of Fourth Street in this instance. The parking could be off Third, Fourth. A lot of that would come in our further architectural and design down the road. But early on, in part of our value sessions, we heard from people that said that they wanted City Hall to be more accessible. Two, this is showing the existing Dolomene Plaza site. Once again, the parking is, a parking field is being shown off Fifth Street, but that parking field could easily be off of Sixth Street as well. There is 38 parking spaces being showed in that parking, just to give you a reference. The third site is the City Hall Parking Lot site. You can see this is more of an urban-type design where you have, the face of City Hall would actually be up on Clark Street and Fifth Street. It takes up approximately two-thirds of the existing City Hall Parking Lot. Of course, the post office site, this being moved closer to Fourth Street with a parking field on the rear closer to Third Street. It should be noted that Third and Fourth Street are both arterials and part of the U.S. 60 business loop. And you can see City Hall across Fourth Street, the existing City Hall. The last one is City Hall Fifth site. The red dash you see on the right-hand side, that's the existing footprint of existing City Hall. The idea here is, is to move off a certain number of feet from the existing structure to build a new structure straddling Fifth Street, closing Fifth Street, of course, and slightly encroaching into the Dolomene Plaza area. This one does show parking then being built along the Fourth Street arterial. This is just an example of one of the site selection scores that we're giving for one of the criteria. I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what the directors did. This was under visibility and prominence. All 10 of those criteria, there'd be a separate sheet just like this where we would go through and basically rank using those scores each of the sites. So visibility and prominence would have gotten a rank for each of those sites. So that's kind of how that proceeded. The site selection criteria scoring, this is the scoring that was coming up by consensus. The first was zoning. All sites were scored high as they were located within the Civic Center Zone. Under land area, all sites scored high with the exception of the existing City Hall Parking Lot, as currently only one-third of the block is available. Visibility and prominence, all sites scored a medium or low with the exception of the existing City Hall site, which maintained a high score. The other sites disrupt the urban design of the Central Plaza theme where governmental buildings surround Dolomene Plaza. Under parking availability, the existing City Hall site and the Fifth Street site scored high, while the other sites vary depending on the distance from the existing parking lot or the disruption of parking as would happen with the existing Parking Lot site. Pedestrian accessibility, all sites scored high as sidewalks connect all locations within the downtown and the remaining Civic Center land uses. The post office site scored slightly lower as two arterials would surround the new City Hall. Vehicular accessibility, all sites scored high. Impact on government services, all sites scored high with the exception of the existing City Hall, which scored good as temporary relocation of employees would be required. Construction cost, all sites scored high with the post office scoring slightly lower as acquisition costs would be involved with the redevelopment of this site. Number nine, obstacles to proceed. All sites varied in score as all have obstacles associated with the redevelopment of each site. And the final one is utility cost or utility relocation, and I think they would be similar with all sites, was the consensus. Where do we go from here? I believe the next step would be proceed with procuring architectural and design services for new construction on preferred sites. That includes drafting a request for proposal for those services and establishment of a development team for oversight. We have thought a little bit further also. If one of these sites was chosen and there could be possibility of relocation of employees, what would we do? We had proceeded with initial site review of office space that would accommodate existing City Hall employees. This is an example of that at the old Social Security Building at 415 South 7th Street. Got in the floor plan, we've looked at the layout, the square feet. How could this structure accompany the existing employees here within City Hall? It happens that this building here had 47 employees with the Social Security Administration City Hall. Right now, we have approximately 46 or so here within City Hall. And that is an overview, and certainly I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Steve, could you go back to the scoring again? I had a brain fade.
The lower the score, the better.
Yes.
I had a brain fade. I tend to look at big scores and all that, so...
No, I don't. But I certainly can. And I'd be certainly happy to forward any of this on to the Commission if you would like to have a copy of it.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Probably, would everyone like to have a copy of this?
I would.
Yeah, we'll send it out.
Absolutely. I'll send it tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
I guess what we'd like to know is what the reaction is to the ratings and gauge if the Commission, how you want to progress, I guess, in the determination of preferred site or sites. I think that it's important that we find a way to proceed with the A and E on this thing. That's going to be a lengthy process, nine to 12 months alone, I think. I don't know that there's going to be great variation between the top two rated sites there. It's going to take probably three months just to get an A and E contract approved and get that work actually to begin. get that work actually to begin, and then another eight or nine months probably for it to finish and be in a position to consider the construction side of the project. So again, I think that the work that was done represents a pretty complete assessment of the options within the government plaza. Certainly, if there was something missed there, we can go back and score more. The criteria, again, if there's something there that you think is missing, we can go back and add something and weave that into the scoring as well. But I think the criteria were pretty self-evident and pretty representative of what typically is taken into consideration in a site selection, albeit this one being a little bit different because it was within a defined area that had already been defined, and the various locations were much closer together than what would typically be the case in citing of a public building.
So do you want us to give you our thoughts on our favorite site? Or do you want us to talk about each one of them? I mean, I don't...
I think some discussion tonight would be good. Again, I would like to get a read from you, especially on whether you're comfortable proceeding or allowing us to proceed with the procurement side of the design. Obviously, that would be brought before you, before anything was formalized, and there'd be a fairly lengthy process involved with that itself.
The footprint of the building really isn't going to change, regardless of the top three sites.
The top three are this site...
Am I understanding that correctly?
Dolly McNutt and the...
So, for you to go ahead and proceed with the design, that really wouldn't matter much. Is that what I'm understanding?
Stephen, I've had this discussion. We don't think it really would matter too much, which means you can take some more time with that. If it, if any of those three, if you don't go outside those three, let's put it that way, then I think that's essentially correct.
As long as we keep it within the government.
I think so.
Plaza, if you will.
Yeah.
There's really a clear break between the top three.
There's a large difference of points.
If we stayed in City, the current City Hall, while, if you, if we chose to, the number two, or the, I mean, the Dolmanet Plaza, or the building between, where we could stay in here, would that not save on having to rent another building?
It would, well, more than likely, it would save some. I don't want to get into great detail about the example that we showed, other than to say that, in this particular situation, we have a much more attractive and viable option for temporary location than what is usually the case when a building needs to be vacated for a period of time, both in terms of location, heck, it's in the government plaza or adjacent to it, which is appealing, size, and also condition. And we have had some very preliminary discussions about cost, and a very attractive rate has been offered there as well. Now, we think it's quite likely that the operational expenses in that location would be less than what they are here, for the period of time that we were in there. So there would be some net, probably, reduction in operational costs, HVAC-related, in the temporary location compared to what we are experiencing here. So we would gain back some of the outlay. I think it's an issue that really needs to be looked at and put in the context of a 50-year life of this building, 50-year cost out of the new build, and obviously, I think the impact on staff and also the public. I think that that question about the impact on staff and public is impacted very positively with the option that we think we have available, close in, compared to what it might otherwise be. Again, I think we're very fortunate to have that attractive of an option to consider. It makes the functionality issue of that 18 months to two years, whatever it would be, a whole lot less problematic, it would seem to me. I've seen relocations out of single buildings in the public sector go into multiple locations, and that's just not a good thing at all, let alone one so close here, and one that, again, would allow the functions, at least most of them that are here now, to continue there. That's something we could put pencil to paper, Commissioner Wilson, and bring something back. But my sense is, right now, that, over the long term, the intangibles and the tangibles combined would not look too disfavorable.
So, I guess when I look at this project that we're going to be involved in, and it's, it's an aesthetic thing to me, the balance that we have now with Dolly McNutt and City Hall and the county courthouse, and having that open plaza in between the City Hall and County courthouse, to me, looks like a civic area, looks like a government plaza, where if you put it somewhere else, in one of the other locations, it's going to, it's going to mess that balance up. To me, this is the ideal location for City Hall to be located. We do have the ability to move into the old Social Security Office, which is ample space, needs to have very little done, except move cubicles. And it's very important to me to keep as many of these trees as we can. I'd rather not lose any of these huge, mature willow oaks, so...
So would you be looking at the cost of building new here, as opposed to, we do have the estimate on what it would cost to renovate here?
Right.
So to compare those two?
And, I mean, I think, I thought we'd already made that decision to build. Did we not?
That was the sense we had, is that we shouldn't value it.
Rather than renovate.
Build over renovation.
Did we ever...
Because of the cost of operating this building, even if it were renovated.
And the limitations for improvements in certain areas with renovation.
Yes, I thought it was, we voted to study to see what the cost comparison would be.
Sure. We'll have to get an estimate on...
Would this be a question I don't understand, Steve? Did we ever think about putting City Hall, where the old City Hall was, between Third and Fourth, on Kentucky, in the city-owned parking lot? And then by, I love the aesthetics, I agree with the aesthetics, because if, if then the post office ever went away, and that became, oh, another park, we'll just say, you'd have Chamber of Commerce on one end, County Courthouse at the other end, and then we would be, so we'll be facing that long civic plaza area, just as a thought.
No, is the answer. When I started looking at sites, I was under the understanding that there had been some consensus that we're going to stay within the existing civic center zone. So I looked at sites within the existing civic center zone.
I guess, since I didn't get to be on the panel, I didn't get to put my oars no more early, but I keep thinking about, I mean, it'd be just, you know, you'd have, to say, you have courthouse, Dolmanet, the existing location, the City Hall, which would be, we'll say, park, post office, which would be park space, Chamber of Commerce, and right here, you have City Hall. So it'd face this, this area. Anyway.
Of course, we don't know what will happen to the post office.
We don't.
No.
We just rent.
Right. You know, most government buildings, we've gone through those exercises before with government buildings, and they usually go to another government agency. Is that true?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Certainly, at the federal level, they try to transfer those. Also, back to your question, as it relates to the existing parking lots downtown, as we become more successful with new business and new residential development downtown, I think we're going to have more of a need to preserve our existing parking that we have down there.
That's a good point.
So would it, could we not get an estimate on the top three locations with, as you said, the footprint would basically be the same, or...
I think you'll be able to apply that estimate to the top three locations, is what I'm hearing them say.
I think so, and I think we could, we could go through the RFP and selection process with an architect without having that nailed down as well. Again, I don't anticipate architecturally that the different locations would have much bearing on that, unless you wanted to try to match something up with something closer to it here, rather than there. But in terms of the structural part of it, the functionality, no, I don't think that's going to have a big bearing on the selection of the architect, because I don't anticipate that much variance, unless you all do, but I can't see it, really.
So the next logical move for us, as for staff, and you're looking for us to give you some direction on where to go, where to move from this point?
Yeah, sort of like the last workshop, where you gave us, at least what I thought, was a pretty strong indication, government plaza, new build. We would like to be able to proceed now to a next logical step of securing architectural design services, so that that process can begin. And shortly into that process, if you've not made a determination on a single site, you would do it at some point in that process. We would have three or four months before the contract for architectural services was signed, to make that decision, too, if you chose you wanted to do it ahead of that. But again, I think we've established, and we'd all agree, Rick, if you disagree, say so, between those three sites, it's probably not going to have a whole lot of bearing on who we select for architectural services. So I guess we have that going for us.
It's flat.
And we don't own the post office site, so I think we should just take that one out. Really, we don't know what would happen with that. And then, it seems like the City Hall, yeah, and it seems like City Hall parking lot was, you know, not desirable, from the staff's perspective. So that does leave the other three. I think we should just proceed with that.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. Based on what I've heard, then, at the staff level, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the development of an RFP and undertake a process, leading up to a contract to hire that done. We'll be in touch with you, I'm sure, on more than one occasion in meetings about that as it proceeds going forward.
Okay. Yeah, my question was going to ask if you needed a motion to do that, but it's fine.
I would, I would love a motion for that, yes.
Make the motion, Carol?
Yes, I'll move.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayla.
Aye.
Okay, we have the city manager's report.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. That's all I have.
We're all Irish today, aren't we?
Yep. Yes.
Well, almost.
Do you want an executive session?
And I'd like an executive session for potential purchase of land.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Any Commissioner comments?
Rick, could you just come up and, I know, last, last time we met, you talked a little bit about the river and the water. People was asking me about floodgates and things, so I told them to tune in, and you would, you would let them know exactly what's going on and what would happen.
Well...
Before that, those gates went up.
I went downtown, and I got lunch today, and I carried my lunch to the riverfront to meet with my buddy. The river. I was down there, and there's people walking down there, and I said, I'm just trying to keep up with what's going on. We're cresting today, and we're cresting around 45, about 45 feet, and that's about five feet from it, coming down Broadway. A lot of people ask us those questions, when is it that, when is it that you make the determination to put the gates in? We watch a weather site, NOAA, and it gives the lower Mississippi and lower Ohio River elevations, and it gives a five-day forecast, much like a weather prediction, it's giving you a five-day forecast on what river elevations are going to be. And we act on that, and, for example, we could have a 38-foot river, and if the five-day forecast comes out and says, we're going to go to 51 feet in five days, I'll start putting floodgates in immediately, based on that forecast. We won't wait, we won't wait and say, see what happens, because there's a lot of mobilization, there's a lot of prep work, shutting city services down to use that manpower and equipment to erect those, those gates. But right now, with everything, as it is right now, there will be no gates to go in. We do not have a forecast that supports that. We do have some rain that's coming, though. You know, we've had anywhere from a three-to-four-inch prediction to as little as an inch. So with those wild forecasts, we have to really, really watch what the river forecasts are, so... But we watch that daily. After the river goes to 20 feet, we have our first action, and once we have something, you know, we close the flap gate, and as it rises, we stay a foot ahead of whatever the elevations are that are given. And typically, I know, river industry, all the businesses that operate to and from the river, through, through the flood wall, we wait till the very last minute, and before we do it, we install 20 gates in 10 hours. So we wait as long as we can to protect the business interests and the vitality of the city for that boat. Protection of the city comes first when we have those forecasts.
What's the level that, if the river, you watch for the river cresting, to put the...
If we have a forecast in excess of 49 feet, we will, we will start putting gates in. That doesn't put them all in, we start low and start working higher. Now, that's a forecast, not, not an elevation. We, like, for example, here, a couple of years ago, we held it 48 and 1/2 feet, which kind of makes you tighten up a little bit, but with, with our prep work, our training, and what we know we can do in a short period of time, we'll wait. But that forecast is the key component, not what the river is now, it's the forecast.
Had someone this week say they had been down to the boat launch area, they didn't know that it was there, and it was before the water covered it all up?
Actually, I have...
Always amazed.
Actually, I have some video footage of that. It's about, right now, it's about five feet deep over the, over the parking lot. I'm anxious to see what it does. We knew that it would go underwater, and I'll share this with you, when the river is plus or minus a foot of that parking lot elevation, is when it's going to do its most damage. So if it takes a lot of time to, I guess, subside and go down, and it spends a lot of time, you know, right around a foot above that parking lot, that's when it's going to hurt it the most, as far as any erosion or anything like that. And so we'll see, we'll see what happens. But it was in the report, and on average, it's going to go underwater one and 1/2 times a year. So that means some years, it will go under, and some years, it won't. Last year, it didn't.
So did the riverfront, where we launched the boats.
Oh, absolutely, right, for example, like, right now, when we have to close the riverfront on the two roads, you know, the upper road and the lower road, when we close the riverfront, because the upper road is becoming inundated, that parking lot is still fully above water.
Okay. I heard a lot of compliments on the Greenway Trail over the weekend.
Oh, yes.
It was packed. Hundreds of... I wasn't there, but that it was packed, people really enjoyed it, they enjoyed the tunnel, all of it, and can't wait to see the last part of it, but it was really very much enjoyed this weekend.
Underpass.
The underpass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, we have public comments tonight.
I was told that the city has completed the investigation into my complaints concerning Warden Electric, the noise from Warden Electric. But I still have some issues here. Two days after I last spoke to the commission, City Manager Jeff Peterson gave me a call. He stated that the noise ordinance did not respect people's rights. He stated that the noise ordinance did not respect people's rights and needed to be updated. He also stated that the inspectors had not followed the noise ordinance, and that he noticed that I had not mentioned that fact in my last speech before the commission. I told Mr. Peterson that due to time constraints, I had to severely edit my speech, however, that I am on record saying this. Later in the commission, or the conversation, we talked about prohibited noises section of the ordinance, which mentions noise or sound that annoys, disturbs, injures, endangers the comfort, health, peace, and safety of people of ordinary possibilities. We both agreed that what may disturb each individual is subjective, but I stated that this is a noise which I hear resonating all throughout my home and property, kicking on and off every few minutes, including disturbing my sleep on numerous occasions. We had an issue last Saturday night as well. I told Mr. Peterson that there's no one who wouldn't be bothered by this. The conversation concluded with Mr. Peterson stating that he would review the noise ordinance with city attorney and get back to me. On December nineteenth, Mr. Peterson contacted me after speaking with the city attorney. He stated that any noise below sixty-five decibels is in compliance. Once again, I told Mr. Peterson how continuous this invasive noise is. When I asked about the numerous occasions my sleep had been disturbed when they work overnight, he stated that Warden Electric is in compliance. Eventually, eventually I asked Mr. Peterson if he would put me in contact with the city attorney. On the twenty-third, twenty-third of February, I had a meeting with city attorney Glenn Denton so he could have a better understanding of the noise issues concerning Warden Electric. I supplied Mr. Denton an essay of a very detailed account of the issues with Warden Electric over the last three years, and links to my YouTube channel, Injustice in Lowertown, where one video in particular, the noise is registering seventy-three decibels, just at my front door. During the course of the meeting, I asked Mr. Denton if he would clear up some discrepancies that I had my understanding of the noise ordinance, and City Hall's observation of sixty-five decibels being the only criteria. Eventually, I emailed Mr. Denton screenshots of the portions of the noise ordinance I was referring to. It states, states that each, each, excuse me, resident of the community is entitled to live in an environment in which the level of impulse and amplified noise is minimized for the community good, and that it's unlawful for any person to make, continue, or permit any excessive or reasonably loud noise or any other roshish sound, rocket sound, considering the time, date, place, and nature of such noise or sound, that annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, health, peace, or safety of a person of ordinary sensibilities. In the city of Paducah, said noises include but are not limited to sixty-five decibels between seven AM and nine PM. Mr. Denton wrote me a letter saying that he must decline in answering my questions. I told Mr. Denton that I feel this is a major discrepancy and deserves clarification from City Hall, and that I would take this question to the commission. It's my understanding that city ordinances are the rules by which City Hall abide, and that they are not privileges but represent my rights. I have tried to work this matter out with John Warden. I have begged him to do something about the noise. I have suggested to him the proper way to soundproof. My father and I both have offered our services free of charge in moving the compressor. Since the start, City Hall's position has not helped to resolve this matter. It did not help the fact that Inspector Harlan Brazier told John Warden that he did not have to move the compressor or do anything, it was in compliance. John Warden echoed this statement in the October 2013 meeting held at City Hall. Hark also had issues with any structure that would eliminate the noise if it could be seen from the street. Inspector Lasfue Gate once told me that John Warden is aware of these problems but is well within his rights. City Hall has ignored me, and John Warden refuses to talk to me. This problem could easily be solved. I was there before Warden Electric, and I shouldn't have to give up use of my front porch and living room for three years during Warden Electric's continuous operations. I shouldn't have to run fans or wear earplugs in my own home or have my sleep disturbed. Construction operations aren't exempt after six PM, except for Louisville, it's state law that Kentucky, that bars close after two AM. City ordinance does not permit use of lawn maintenance equipment after nine PM. Why is an industrial-sized air compressor permitted to run continuously day and night in historic Lowertown? Running a compressor all night isn't defined as emergency work. According to our ordinances, City Hall, for City Hall to tell John Warden that he's well within his rights, then something's wrong. I'd like to submit these portions of the noise ordinance that there's this discrepancy against about, and I'd like for them to clarify for me. So I will hand this to you right now.
My wife has had total knee replacements, one last fall, and the other one the second of this month, and she's in a lot of pain, especially the first two weeks of knee replacement, total knee replacement. So she shouldn't have to listen to a thumping air compressor after nine o'clock at night, which we had an issue with that the other night especially. There's a lot of pain with the knee replacement, especially the first two weeks of knee replacement, and we try to go to sleep, and then that thing over thumping like a Harley-Davidson Sentinel over Idling without any mufflers. It shouldn't be. Now, we've got rights.
I mean, she listening to that all day? And I mean, they live on the other side of me, and they can hear it as well, and she just had knee surgery, and she's going to have to hear that all night? I called John at nine eight, nine PM, and I told him, you know, you're not within your rights. They'd already been over there all day, and they looked like they were going to continue working all night, which they did, but we did call the police. And I will commend Officer Anderson. He was very professional. He took time to listen to me, he was very, very gentlemanly. I shook his hand and said, thank you. But we're having issues here. This is something that could be solved. There is noise abatement, all sorts of options. There's mufflers, the business in front of me, Chester Mechanical, they have a compressor, and it's properly contained.
It's inside, it's inside the building.
It's closer...
Go ahead, Carol.
It's closer to me than Warden Electric. I mean, I, I deserve a good night's sleep.
I understand. Mr. Johnson, did you receive a letter from Denton and Corler? Did you receive a letter dated March tenth from Glenn Denton?
Yes, I did.
And in this letter, it says that Mr. Denton met with you, and he discussed his findings, and what we're being advised, I found this in my mailbox just before we came, so I'm just reading through it, but it says that, what we're being advised is that it essentially is a civil remedy, that you're, it's a civil remedy, and that your best course of action is to hire a private attorney and seek a civil remedy. It says, "His sincerest hope is that you and Mr. Warden can find a way to address the complaints without legal action, but that has not happened to date. It's probable that your complaints will only be resolved through litigation." And it says also, "If that occurs, the city will likely be called as a witness of some kind." Goes on to explain all that. I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't, I'm not seeing that there's anything else that we can do, given what is the advice of our attorney here. I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to read that letter.
To be told that he's well within his rights, and, and to have my peace in my home disturbed, I mean, City Hall has told him he's well within his rights. John did not get this idea out of just nowhere.
Have, have you sought the advice of an attorney? Have you...
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I mean, would, raise of hands, anybody in the room would like to hear machinery in every square inch of their home, and then have City Hall tell them they're within the rights to do so?
Well, the ordinance states that any time it causes discomfort, and it has, and it is, then we have a legal right, I mean, we have...
More people have...
Expect you to do something about this.
More people than just us have been affected by this, but they're not here with us. They refuse to stand up.
They're scared to stand up with us on this.
Well, let's, let's just, just hang a hat...
I'll try to work this out.
Let's hang a hat on the ordinance for a second, because that's something that, that was created to make sure that, I mean, the wording in the, in the ordinance stipulates that excessive noise at a particular time is not allowed, will not be tolerated. Now, he mentioned earlier that there were certain areas in that ordinance that's what? Not outdated, or?
The ordinance is what it is. The city attorney's position is based on the ability of the city to defend its position based on the existing ordinance. Ordinances can be changed, but the issue is what's in the ordinance now.
Pretty clear cut there. The ordinance has been reviewed, and his findings are, it's, it is what it is. But he's within, they were within the, John Warden's within the law. Yeah, it is what it is. I know, I mean...
Well, there's, there's a problem if he's within his rights when I'm denied my sleep.
So Warden Electric does not violate the decibel allowable? It, it says that it will be a civil matter between the two of them, and as Mr. Johnson has talked to an attorney, and our attorney's essentially saying that we'll be a witness, I don't know where we can go from here. And I know that's not what you want to hear, I understand that, and it really puts us in a trick box, but I, I don't know where we can go from here. I think we've been advised that we have, that he's within his rights.
Here's something else. He's occasionally burning the insulation off those wires, and, and that creates a foul odor, and it's putting the pollutants into the air.
It's varnish, and that's an illicit discharge according to our own ordinance.
I went in there with my video camera, and I said, John, what are you burning? And he stated to me, well, I'm burning the insulation off these wires, and had my video camera pointing at it. He turned the video camera off, and I said, I can videotape anywhere I want to, like that, and he grabbed me by the arm and pushed me out the front door.
Well, it's, I'm not sure you can go to somebody else's private business and videotape. I don't think you can do that. I, I don't...
I will state again that I have posted a video on YouTube where he's seventy-three decibels. Okay.
Well, when you visited the attorney, did they say they would take it?
Yes.
Take the case? Okay. I don't think there's anything else... Certainly not.
Clearly, he has gone over, he has gone over sixty-five decibels more than once.
He's promised two years ago, I will move this air compressor. Now, he's built a brand-new building right up there, close to, between, right there at the alley, it's a metal building, and I didn't think he was supposed to put anything like that in the Lower Town, a metal building, right there, close to Park Avenue, and he could put that compressor in there, and I, I told him, I said, well, I'll, I'll volunteer. I'm retired from the city of Paducah, I'll volunteer to help move it. All you got to do is just run a wire there and PVC pipe back to wherever you're working. And, and he said, I, I will move it, but it'll take longer than you or I want to do, you know? And now he's just dragging his feet. He don't care.
I mean, I wouldn't do that to anybody in this room, disturb them in their home, their sleep. I would not do that. And you can't legislate, you know, respect to, between two people. But it clearly is disrespectful to bother someone and know that, and be able to mitigate this sound so easily, and to be told that he's well within his rights, I mean, to disturb someone? Repeatedly, I mean, by City Hall inspectors.
Well, as Mr. Denton said, I think you all do have a recourse there, a legal recourse.
Oh, of course.
Okay. All right.
But I'm not pleased with City Hall in the ignoring and telling John that he's well within his rights. I want you to know that.
You've especially ignored...
You know, I, I can sit here and listen to that all night, but, but his rights are defined by city ordinance, and for staff to state that, I, I don't really care to hear that mentioned in a negative way, because they are essentially telling you what they can and can't do, which is what we'd like the staff to be able to do. So to say he's within his rights with reference to city ordinance is simply a fact.
You said yourself that the ordinance does not respect people's rights.
Well, did you have...
Before you talked to him and Denton.
Okay. Whatever.
I've got it right there.
And you're not the only one that complains about noise in the city of Paducah? It's not unusual?
Oh, I'm sure.
Throughout the city, in different areas, is what you're saying? Right.
But I, I've been all throughout...
I have people in my neighborhood that complain about, I, I won't say...
Well, people complain, I know what you're talking about.
But loud noises late at night.
They're partying on Friday and Saturdays, you know, if somebody's complaining about that, and I've heard it as well, but they're not going all day long. There's a difference. It's, it's the continuation of it, it's every five minutes.
Do you hear the noise?
Well, it is a business, I mean...
Well, I was there before the business.
Is that the business you're talking about? Ninth and Broadway?
No, no.
Which ordinance doesn't respect folks' rights?
I...
I mean, I'm, I'm...
I believe what I tried to do to the gentleman is to explain to him that essentially, the ordinance defined where rights kicked in or left off, I believe, is my recollection of that, that the decimal limit set a standard which became...
And I think there should be.
...the limit of where your rights fell into. In other words, if something, or excuse me, the limit that defined it, so anything over sixty-five is a violation of your rights. If it's under sixty-five, it's not. So if he's under sixty-five, he's within his rights.
So if that states that any noise is not limited to just sixty-five decibels, and it talks about annoying someone, then we're just going to abridge it to sixty-five decibels?
I believe that the inclusion of that measure of sixty-five in the ordinance, as I explained to you before, established that standard.
Yes, but it also says it's not limited to.
You have had a meeting with our city attorney, correct? I mean, that's what this said?
Yes, I have.
I know he's addressed you. You know, I think that's where we stand right now. I mean, it, that's...
Well, I would like to make a move that, that this decimal meter needs to be for low decimals, and it's not measuring actually low decimals. I hear cars going down Park Avenue with the boom boxes going with speakers this big around in the trunk, and it's rattling my windows there, and, and then Jake breaks like that. Now, you know, that, that don't happen at night, but it, that shouldn't be.
But Warden Electric does happen at night.
Well, when, unfortunately, when we live in an urban area, we do have more noise pollution than if we live in a country setting.
Well, we were there before the loop ever came through.
Well, I'm sorry.
You're surrounding, you have Eighth Street onto your back, and you have the loop to either side.
You can hear that compressor all the way to...
Oh, our, our property's been degraded immensely in the last thirty-five years. I mean, it's just beyond belief. But with all the businesses that are around me, you know, no one's bothering me, no one's running equipment like that, and, and, but John Warden.
It would be so easy to just move the compressor inside somewhere in that new warehouse out there, but...
Well, that's, you need to talk to your attorney, and that's what you all need to work out.
Well, we tried to work that out with a meeting here a couple of years ago, but John was told that he's within his rights.
But you have spoken to an attorney, and attorney has said he would take your case?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you for abridging the ordinance.
I think we have an executive session tonight. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of specific parcels of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B.
Second.
City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Wilson? Aye.
Mayor Kayla?
Aye.
Are we adjourned? Will we be coming out?
Brief, brief executive.
Yeah. Will we be coming back out?
No.
Meeting's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned. There you go.